Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome you to the regular meeting of the Milwaukee Planning Commission. Agendas and additional copies of staff reports are available on the table in the hall. If you have not picked up an agenda, please do so. It contains important information about the process. If you wish to be included in the mailing list for a decision, please add your name and contact information to the sign-up list located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to testify, also please fill out a yellow comment card. We'll follow the basic format listed on the back of the agenda. It includes all the hearing procedure steps. We may vary from the process based on the specific circumstances of each hearing. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. We've got four meeting minutes to approve. First up, February 12th, 2019. We also have February 26th, October 8th, and October 22nd. Within this set of minutes, does anyone have any comments or edits or additions on those?
No.
No.
Okay. So can we just approve them all at one go?
You can.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve meeting minutes from February 12th, 2019, February 26th, 2019, October 8th, 2019, and October 22nd, 2019.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Minutes approved. Next on the agenda, information items from staff.
All right. Thank you Chair Travis. There are a couple of items I'd like to bring up. Out on the dais here for the commissioners and then out in the hallway included with the meeting packet, there were a couple additional items to go with tonight's meeting packet. There were comments provided by the North Clackamas Watershed Council that came in late yesterday afternoon, so we printed out some hard copies and had previously emailed those on to the Planning Commission. There were comments provided earlier today by Elvis Clark, who has informed us that he'll also be providing oral testimony. And then there was a third attachment, which was overarching chapter goals for a few of the -- actually, they would be called overarching section goals now for a few of the topic areas within the comprehensive plan where we had failed to incorporate those into the draft that is included in the meeting packet. That was just an oversight where we hadn't quite incorporated those into the documents. We wanted to have those for the discussion and for your review between now and before your first public hearing on January 14th. And then a couple other items. We just wanted to let you know that we had our first Planning 101 session last week. We had about 20 or 25 people. I was at the Hillside Master Plan celebration, so I wasn't here, but Denny, Vera, and Mary were all here. And I've been informed that it went well, that there was a lot of great discussion, a lot of information provided. And we look forward to providing additional Planning 101s probably in spring 2020 would be the next one. I was at the Hillside Master Plan, which was the same evening. There, I would say, probably 50 to 60 people there total that kind of cycled in. There was a brief presentation from Clackamas County Housing Authority, and then they answered questions both kind of from the entire group and then they broke up into -- they had staff members at three different boards which fielded questions on the specifics of the master plan. That kind of ends the county's involvement with the master planning process. They're going to be needing to be submitting for land use application, and that will be largely a city-driven process. And finally, on December 17th, so next Tuesday, the Planning Commission will be holding a joint work session with the City Council to discuss the work plan for 2020 and beyond. Really a lot of focus on the implementation of the comprehensive plan, some of the middle housing code work, tree protection, a lot of the other items that we discussed, I think, back on November 12th. That is currently scheduled to begin at 8:35 PM, which isn't ideal, so we're going to be trying to get that moved up. And so we'll be sending out the meeting packet for that by Friday, and we'll update you on the time if we're able to move that up a little bit to get you out of here not quite so late. So that's what I have. I would also note that there is still a vacancy for the Planning Commission that people can apply. And so I would encourage anyone here tonight or anyone that they know that would like to spend a couple Tuesdays a month just really learning the ins and outs of the planning world of Milwaukee to apply for that.
Thank you. Let's have some clarifications for tonight. So next on the agenda, we have a section for audience participation, and that is for people that want to comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. And I think there was maybe a misunderstanding with the sign-in sheet about comments on additional items.
Well, I think, yeah, that was on the sign-in sheet, I think, to be kept apprised of it. I think -- so I'd have to look at the bylaws as far as how we deal with the work sessions. I can take a quick look at that, but typically the work sessions don't have a public comment period the way that a public hearing would have.
Right.
So, I mean, it's kind of up to you, but I would encourage that we have -- that we review the public comments, offer people an opportunity to provide those at the outset of the meeting.
Yeah.
Outside of the meeting.
Let's do that.
And then, as needed, there may be opportunities.
Okay. Yeah, let's do that. So we'll have the audience participation now. I do have several comments up here, yellow cards. I see another one here. So I will call each of you up, and you have three minutes for public comment, so please remember to state your name and address for the record and try to keep your remarks to three minutes. We don't have our timer, but I'll keep an eye on the clock so we can continue moving forward. So, first up, Bernie Stout.
Bernie Stout, 4647 Southeast Ada Lane. I'm going to throw some information out and then try to knit it together. The Portlander Tribune today has an article about food front efforts to survive fail, and they rattle off three major grocery stores that are closing. Lambs, which is an old one that I know of for years. And then on tonight's news, South Korea-based company Good Foods Holding now owns New Seasons. So there's food desert in Milwaukee. Then there's another one in today's Clackamas Review about the Cove development down here in Oregon City and what a fiasco that's been for 10 years. And one of the issues is slurry underground. And last night at the historic NDA meeting, it was mentioned that Koho Point also has slurry problems underneath it. I wrote the -- or I talked to the school district, trying to tie in what's happening with the schools. Basically, they said, you know, nothing for the next 10 years. Surprising how few students a new apartment complex brings, but yet we're putting in a lot of them. And then they're currently under-enrolled. C4 meeting last week, Clackamas County, I think it was Paul Salvas said the affordable housing that exists is probably the best housing even into the future. And then I think at the PSB tonight is something about reaching out and community-wide, you know, communications. And that was one of the issues at the Cove that they're contesting is not enough outreach, not enough notification. So I'm kind of trying to knit this all together in that as we move forward on all these projects, that the projects are posted online and given some specifics. For instance, we keep talking about units, but it's not a real representation of what's going in because you don't know how many bedrooms there are. And by law, you can have two people per room, so it's actually double of whatever the bedrooms are, but yet we don't -- the units don't say how many bedrooms. So the impact kind of gets escalated, and it seems like it would be better to have a conversation that includes the whole picture. I'm just trying to think of what I was trying -- where I was going with all this. It seems like Milwaukee's going to be growing pretty fast here in the next three to five years, and being prudent about how we go about it would be helpful. Anyway, I think that's as good as I get it.
Thank you.
All right.
Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you for your comment. All right. Elvis Clark?
Hello? I'm Elvis Clark. I live in -- up in Ardenwell, near the water tower. And the reason I came here tonight was to -- because a number of my neighbors and myself included are concerned about what happens to the City Hall building here and the property that surrounds it, this block, when the city vacates it in a couple of years for the Adventist building up the street here. In that, we found that the deed for the property itself has a covenant in it that the surrounding yard of the property, of this block, needs to be -- maintains a public park. And the city manager and Alma -- yeah, I forgot her name. Anyway, they went to the school board meeting last November 21st and said that they would like to have that covenant removed so that they can remarket or market the whole property as a package. And their explanation was that they can't afford the maintenance on the building once they vacate. And -- but the thing that bothers -- another thing they noted was that there's a number -- Milwaukee's added a lot of parks since the deed covenant. Well, that was some 80 years ago, I guess. But anyways, things that got wrong with -- things that got concerned about that is that, one, they're not telling you how much they're seeking to make more on the resale. And there might be a bit of an interest in selling the property and developing it more intensely than just leaving the building. This longtime historic, almost historic building because it's built in the Roosevelt area during the Depression, and it's -- there's nothing much like it downtown. It's very iconic. And the public park part of it should be stayed too, should stay with the property too. Because what we have is, in the central location, we don't have a lot of parks other than Waldorf has -- but that's private school, so that's not really public. And then you got the Letting Library has the, I think it was the Amphitheater or the little park there, Spring Park. Then there's Dogwood, but there aren't not really much of a -- not big parks or anything like that. So then the other parks they were mentioning as bringing into the park system here is like Elk Rock, but that's like, you know, 10-minute walk or more. And then Kronberg's across the bridge, and then you got to go -- to get Milwaukee Bay, you had to go across McLaughlin, which is pretty busy. So there's a need to preserve this building here and the property as it is largely. And I hope that if the Planning Council does get involved, that they'll try and protect that interest. Also, I put on the back page that we have a number of buildings that are starting to come in of the five-story or three-story, four-story size, and there's other locations in the core downtown that those things are going to start to dominate as they develop. So there's a real need to keep more of an oasis around like a City Hall like this, like Portland's done that with some of their -- well, in fact, they got their old -- they still have their old building. Anyways, that's what I had to comment on and take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Travis, if I could just respond to that.
Yep.
There's -- on January 7th, the City Council's going to be having a discussion, I believe, a study session item or a work session. I guess it would be a work session item on looking at forming a committee to look at the repurposing of the City Hall facility. They're looking at establishing -- I'm not sure if they've set on the number of committee members, but somewhere between 12 and 18 committee members that would represent kind of a diverse set of expertise and interests here in Milwaukee. So I would encourage people to stay involved and potentially attend that meeting. It would be a public application process, and so there will be an opportunity for people to apply to serve on that committee.
Great. Thank you.
I also just want to make a statement so that everybody is clear is why would the city manager be going to NCSD for this, right? Why would North Clackamas School District be involved? It's because this property was originally the first schoolhouse here in town, and they gave it to the city to build the City Hall. And so that's how that is all integrated together, just for clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks. So next up is Ken Kraska.
How are we doing today?
Good.
Good. So I've got two things. I'm mostly just going to talk on one.
Okay. Make sure you state your name and address for the record, will you?
Yeah, I will.
Okay.
Thank you.
The other one, but we'll get to that. Okay, so my name's Ken Kraska, Milwaukee. Nice to meet you once again. So I'm just putting in here some suggested minor edits to the comp plan. Some of them are minor, some of them are maybe less minor. And I'll pass those out to the audience members in just a moment, but basically the idea is that in Chapter 7, that we'd be more specific in the comp plan. Because my understanding is that the primary purpose of the comprehensive plan policies is to direct legislative decisions such as comp plan and zoning map amendments, special area plan adoption, and adoption of development regulations. Under state law, all area and community plans, zoning codes, and public improvements must be consistent with a comprehensive plan. So we want to make sure that the comprehensive plan is very clear in its objectives. I mean, loose enough that it allows for some variance, but specific enough that there's not problems later. So for example, instead of within close proximity to frequent bus service corridors, I changed it to propose within a quarter mile to light rail and half-mile to corridors that run through existing residential areas. And then I suggested defining frequent bus service corridors as those which are traversed by more than one single bus line. I suggested that land use is done commensurate with development. I specify sidewalks and bike paths. And let me mention, this is a conglomeration of a lot of different community members that I've been in touch with about this. And improving the quality and connectivity, et cetera, et cetera. So these are just -- and I don't want it to come off as negative because there were a lot of really good things in there. For example, the signage on 224, a lot of the environmentally oriented things, a lot of the pragmatic aspects around balancing parking with increased density. But to make it shorter, I just put in things that I thought suggested might be changed. In the packet you got from the Natural Resource Council, they write, which I just saw it here, they suggest that you create a mechanism that ensures proposed development receives -- they say, "Under current practice, proposed development has typically undergone a significant portion of design before the council or other organizations are notified. This is a significant barrier to instituting green infrastructure since it requires redesign work at considerable cost and time. We urge the city to provide notification at the earliest possible pre-design and conference stages to provide experts and to require these consultations before preliminary design is created rather than after the fact." And there's been some things that have been concerning to me, and I'll pass this out now, about certain characterizations.
If you could finish your comment and then, well, pass it out. We're almost up on time here, so.
Certain characterizations of -- by someone, I guess by staff, as minor edits or minor amendments that actually change, propose to raise density in R10 by 41 percent, by 20 percent, and in R3 by 41 percent, and characterizes these as just minor edits and amendments. There also was something with the PD code that -- I was there at that meeting with you guys, and no one discussed the fact that it would change, and Denny acknowledged that it would merit more discussion, that it would basically allow PD code amendments to increase density through a type 4 rather than 3, or whichever one is less onerous, through an easier type process. And that may have just been overlooked, but I'm concerned that -- about the process. And also specifically, I know that, you know, coming from having -- being the child of a computer engineer and a school psychologist, my father and my mother, I can appreciate both perspectives. I'm reading a book right now called "The Divided Brain and the Making of Western Civilization", and in there he talks about left and right hemisphere thinking. Some of these plans that have been made are being viewed very piecemeal, but what's missing is a context, which is more right hemisphere activity. We need more of a context when we look at these individual land use decisions and how they impact one another systemically. So for example, in the first document I provided, even though the proposal is to just put off the TSP plan until later, the TSP plan is integral, and it should be done congruently and concurrently, in my opinion, and in others, with the land use decisions because they both impact one another. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for your comments. Any questions? No? Thanks for reading the draft comp plan.
I read the whole thing and...
That's great. Renell Coburn?
We're going together.
Okay. Come on up. State your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Renell Coburn. I live on Southeast 29th between Malcolm &amp; Boyd and Ardenwalt.
Chris Ortolano, 11088 Southeast 40th Ave. Thank you, Commission Chair Travis and other Planning Commissioners. I want to let you know that it's been really pleasant for us to attend these meetings. The last Planning Commission meeting that we had was really, really substantive. It was quite a bit of dialogue, and we appreciate that. We're not here to comment on the comp plan update. We know there's going to be some discussion about that. We're actually here to serve as a bridge from another meeting which occurred over at the Public Safety Building with regards to community engagement. We see community engagement as one of council's top three goals. Council will invest at least $100,000 over the next period to commission some studies and surveys. We have some ideas around that as well. We have actually included those ideas in your packet, so we wanted to thank you for mentioning that. One of the things that we want to really call out, especially for other members of the NDA, and NDA leaders and community members, is the concept of a committee for citizen involvement. The acronym for that is called a CCI, and a number of cities have them. And it's like any other committee, you know, it is comprised essentially of community leaders who work with staff to administer an outreach program. And the three things that we look for in those types of programs first are access, and then the quality of communication, and then the quantity. So these are the kinds of metrics that we would evaluate. And I'm just going to speak a little bit to access, and then I'm going to let Renell speak a little bit about quality and quantity, because we know this is a big topic, and you are serving actually as our CCI right now for the comp plan update process. We have no critique of the comp plan outreach or update. This is more of the broader community engagement. So the three things that we're really concerned about are first, the website. We were here at the Land Use Planning 101 meeting essentially last Wednesday, where staff acknowledged that the website search engine is unusable, and they do not use the search engine on the city website. They use Google instead, which is great if you know what you're looking for, but if you don't, the search engine is ineffective. So essentially, you are preventing people from scrolling through and finding things that they need to find, which is what we do. The second has to do with the distribution of notifications. We have had some, I'll call it misunderstandings, I'm not going to call it breakdowns, but when people sign up for lists to be notified, we don't have a consistent process to acknowledge that those notifications have been received, especially for events that may not be town halls. So we want to bring that to your attention because, as Kelly Brooks, and I'll wrap up my remarks, Assistant City Manager, said earlier tonight, we live in a city that actually is blessed by having so many citizens involved in their NDAs and their BCCs, and those ideas are actually making positive contributions. So I'll pass the rest of my time over to Renell Coburn.
Yeah. No, I don't want to say too much, except that at this point, especially after sitting after -- through the last meeting, that I'm kind of disturbed by the lack of community members' voices in the discussions for community involvement. So the last meeting we sat through, we listened, we watched, but there were no discussions about consulting the community at all about what they want, what's useful, content of information, frequency of information, ways to get information out that are more effective than what's happening right now, more active and less passive. So I'm really hoping that a CCI will come under some kind of serious consideration here. Almost every city sitting around us has a CCI, a Community Involvement Committee, CIC, there are various names for it. I've seen in our materials be referred to as a CIAC. I assume that's an action committee, but I think we really need one, especially as Milwaukee grows and there are more people to be in contact with, and a higher level of communications, particularly marketing expertise and digital marketing expertise, is going to need to be incorporated in to have efficient systems for contacting citizens and letting them know what's going on, making sure emails don't go into spam folders. That actually, I have figured out between the county list and the city list is a major problem right now. Also, especially with Gmail, you have to know how to keep your emails from going into the promotions folder. Most people don't even know they have a promotions folder. So you send out emails, and your people don't get them. So you check the box you sent them, but the recipients are not getting them. Many of them are. So we just need a higher level of expertise around that, and CCI could help with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Gary Klein?
Gary Klein, 10795 Southeast Riverway Lane, Milwaukee, Oregon. I listed one item, electronic signs, and I just have a question there is what's happening with any ordinance along electronic signs, since we seem to have a large number of them here, and they sure have grown up over the last few years. I've mentioned this at several meetings and so on, and council sessions, and I haven't heard of anything happening in that direction. The second part I'm adding because I've been to a lot of meetings lately on Koho Point, and that I'm very concerned about it, just as much as people are concerned about City Hall and that the city owns that lot, just like we own this lot. And it's not going through the same look at with the community that this lot is, and it's getting a big start, and there's going to be a group together and set it up and make it happen. That has just been boom, a meeting at Masonic Lodge, and here it's going to be this size, and two entrances maybe either on McLaughlin or Washington or Adams, and a lot -- and a basement and an upper area with parking and under 200 units. And now the next thing I hear, just a month ago, it's going to be over 200 units, it's only going to have one floor of parking, and there's only going to be one entrance. And so everything's changing, and we have no input. And yet we're getting input on City Hall long before that issue starts coming up, and the city owns both lots. And I think we need to have a lot more input on Koho Point. It's being slammed through, and it's going to go up and push the council here this week and give them some pointed direction and off and running, and it's done. It's not happening like it should. I really appreciate more community input on a lot that we all own.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm going to ask if David can address some of your points. So, I'm going to ask if David can address some of your points. I think that the sign code, first of all, we did update the sign code not that long ago, but I...
We did. I would need to look to see when that was addressed.
This year, sometime in 2019.
Yeah, and there is some discussion, I would need to look at the work, the 2020 to 2022 work plan there was, updating the sign code was on that. I know that there have been previous concerns expressed about electronic signs.
Quark Mile signs.
Yeah, I can, I can check in on that and provide additional information on that. I'm not quite sure what the timeline is for doing the time, doing the sign code given how much other work is currently on your work plan. As far as Coho Point, yeah, I'd be happy to, you know, relay those concerns on. I think that Allison Wicks, the Development Project Manager, and Leila Man, the Community Development Director, have been much more involved with that project to date than I have. They are going to be subject to a land use application, I mean, to land use review, to downtown design review, given their location within downtown Milwaukee. So, there will be opportunities for public comments on that. As far as it being kind of a larger public involvement opportunity like the, you know, the committee that's being discussed for the repurposing of City Hall, I don't, I don't think there's any been, been any discussion about that. So, I think that's something that could probably be directed to council if there's, if the community feels there's a need to have kind of a broader community outreach outside of the land use review process.
Okay. Thank you, David. Thank you. So, there will be a land use process. It hasn't come before us yet, so it's, it will follow the same procedures and that other land use applications do, so.
Why does it not get as much City Hall? I mean, we own, all of us own it just like City Hall.
Sorry, I don't have an answer for that, but we appreciate your comments and David's going to carry those comments on to leadership, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for the public comment. We're going to move on. We do have some procedure around a hearing, but I don't have my, oh, can I borrow this? Okay. So, we are going to open the public hearing for the Southeast 55th Avenue and Railroad Avenue subdivision. It's called to order. Purpose of this hearing is to consider application number... duh, 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 duh. Don't have that.
S-201.
And we are going to open this hearing and then close the hearing to January 14th, 2020.
Okay, yeah, continue the hearing.
Continue the hearing. And I need a motion for that.
I would like to make a motion to continue the hearing to January 14th of 2020 for S-2018-001.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Will be continued to January 14th, 2020. Thank you. So, next we move on to our work session item and I'm just really impressed with the full crowd that we have here tonight. This has been a dream of mine, and these guys know, for a long time to have the opportunity to meet with NDA's leadership and land use chairs to talk about how we can work better together and just have an open exchange of information about how, how it's working. And so, I appreciate all of you coming tonight. I think that we're going to try to have NDA leaders come up, right? And...
Yeah, so the thought was, staff wise, we have myself and then Jason Wax from the City Manager's Office that does a lot of the neighborhood engagement. He's here as well and is going to be participating in the discussion. We'll go ahead and sit up here at the front table, but we would encourage NDA leaders and other NDA board members to come up to the dais. We'd like this to be, you know, a real discussion with, you know, access to the microphones and all that. I can, I guess we have a fair number. I was thinking of pulling one of those tables up to extend the dais and using the portable mic for that table and then letting people come up.
Yeah, let's do that.
And let's try to shuffle around.
Great.
Just pick any chair we want.
Do it, yeah. You're sitting next to Greg.
It always gets me in trouble. Gets him in trouble. I'll interlope here. See? Put your helmet on, just stand. Behave yourself now. That's what I did. Oh, man.
Let's see here. Denny. There's another seat up here. Couple seats. David's going to...
I know that it's, nobody wants...
And also, we can scooch in a little bit, too. We can share mics and...
Come on over.
We're all friends and neighbors here, right?
We've met before on Robert Mason.
Hi, Robert.
Here, too.
There's another kind of lying chair here. Don't feel shy. Girl. Mr. Greg.
Someone's going to puffer between...
Yeah, that's, that's good. I'm glad you're there.
We hate each other.
Seriously, thank you for doing that.
Did you color on yourself already?
Well, thanks again, everyone. This, this is great. I'm so excited to have, have this happen. So, I think part of, part of the purpose is really, as I said, to open up the channel of communication and talk about how we can improve communicating with you about land use, how you can talk with us about land use, that's topics that are coming up in your meetings and just keep that exchange open a little bit. We had talked about making this a regular meeting. When I talked about this with Denny, he actually, we came up with some questions and discussion guide topics. I don't know, I think those were emailed out, at least to some of you. I don't know if you've had a chance to see them, but I thought we could just quickly, I'll quickly just mention those. And then, I think it would be good if we could go around the room. I mean, you guys know who we are, but it'd be nice to get names and introduction and get some comments from you as we start this discussion. So, so, here's the thing, here are the things that Denny and I talked about for this meeting. The Planning Commission would like to schedule an annual meeting with NDA leaders. Is that something you would find useful? Would you be willing? Should others attend and be invited? What are the roles and responsibilities of NDAs in planning and public engagement? What is required by city policies? How can NDAs help encourage diverse, equitable, and inclusive participation? What are planning related issues that are currently important to the NDAs? How closely have you been tracking the work of the comp plan? Do you have any suggestions or thoughts about what can be done to better inform community members about important issues? Is there anything the Planning Commissioner or city staff could do to make it easier for NDA opinions to be heard? So, that's, those are kind of the general things, the themes that, that Denny and I talked about. And so, hopefully, as we're going around, you know, please, you know, introduce yourself and then if you have any thoughts you want to put on the table with those big questions or, you know, if you simply just want to say, here's a land use issue or something that has come up over the last year that we've really struggled with, you know, you don't have to address the questions. If there's something else that you want to use this time to put on the table, feel free to do that, too. So, I was thinking we would, we have a large crowd. I mean, we can take 30 minutes or an hour if we need to. It's just really valuable to have you all here, so appreciate that. Why don't we start, why don't we start on this side? Is that okay?
For those of you who don't know, you need to speak into the mic or else it doesn't get recorded, so.
Thank you, Greg.
And there's a handheld mic down there, so Jason, don't throw it at Ray. Hand it over to him nicely.
Oh, darn. My name is Christina Cole. I am not the NDA, but I've been asked to be the land use planning individual. So, being someone who has just recently moved here, I am a neophyte. So, I have a lot to learn, but I am very eager and I've learned a lot just recently. But, and the biggest issue we have dealt with has been the Monroe-Linwood intersection that has had, I think, the highest accident rate in the city. I believe that's correct. And so, we're, we've got a lot of movement on that. And then, we just recently discussed the Linwood Avenue kind of expansion that's going on. So, everybody's been very interested in that. So, I will stop there.
You all know me. Dave Ashenbrenner, Chair of the Hector Campbell Neighborhood. I've got a list that can go on forever, so I'll just highlight a few of them. One of our big concerns is zoning and variances. It seems to be really easy to get a variance in this city for just about anything and that definitely has an impact on neighborhood livability. And so, our concern is, how can we have more input on those type of things? Just had one in my neighborhood where the lot was under 5,000 square feet. They wanted three variances. They got all three of them. And now, you've got a substandard or sub-sized lot that's not 5,000 square feet, it's like 4,000 and a half. And it's just like, you comment and it's like, seems like the decision's already been made. And we, I have found through my years of being involved, that if you're not involved early in the process, before it even gets to the Planning Commission level, that you're not going to have an impact. By the time it gets to Planning Commission and by the time it gets, especially to council, it's pretty much been worked over. And if you really want to get involved, you have to get involved early. We are presently in the middle of the Monroe Apartment Project Neighborhood Meeting last night. We approved a few more pieces of that for our comments that are due this Friday. I strongly feel that if myself and a few other community members have not been involved and waited till it got to the Planning Commission, we would have had very little impact on that whole project. And that's, that's where it's really hard for people in the neighborhood and other NDAs people to understand that even when you work full-time and have three or four other hats you wear, you got to dog this stuff down and it can be a real challenge. So, those are my two, the zoning and variance issues. I just got concerns about, you know, the quality of our neighborhoods. If all of a sudden you're, you're allowing variances for everything, then yeah, you're going to get more housing, you're going to get it more in everybody's backyards. And so, their quality of, my quality of my backyard area is now, would be impacted because my three neighbors can build houses all the way around me and then I'm just like a little itty bitty island from what it used to be. So, I'll leave it at that. I can go on forever.
Pam Denham, Island Station, I'm land use chair. I'm kind of going to just go down your list here. So, an annual meeting with the NDA leaders, yes. I think that would be very useful to keep us abreast of what's going on and what's current because we don't always know. And roles and responsibilities of the NDAs in the planning and public engagement, well, we're directly involved, whatever NDA it's in. And so, like David said, we need to know early and get involved early. So, I think that's very important. Planning related issues that are currently important to the NDAs, well, for us at Island Station, it's density and views of the Walamette that we really want preserved because once they're gone, they're gone, you know, and I know that's a Greenway thing and everything else, there's so many layers. And of course, we currently have Elk Rock Estates in our neighborhood, so that's, we're involved with that. People are pleased in the neighborhood with the safe project on River Road and 22nd, so they're really good about that. So, I'm, I'm pleased that that's working out. I guess I just want to end with saying, getting involved early, like David said, is really the only way to make an impact. And I don't know how to better communicate to individuals because people are always going to say, I had no idea, even when you mail things to their house or hang it on their doorknob, but we should try. Thanks.
My name is Lisa Gunyan Rinker. I'm the land use chair for the Ardenwald Johnson Creek Neighborhood Association. Our neighborhood's unique in the sense that we're both Portland and Milwaukee and so we'll receive, well, right now, we're inundated with all kinds of projects on the Milwaukee side as well as several projects, I would say, on the Portland side. And it's just, it's hard to keep track of everything. But again, I agree and I want to add a comment that I hope people consider. I consider myself more solution oriented and upon learning that you can get a look at the pre-application, maybe we should make it something that even though the pre-app will be changed, that that's something that could also go to the neighborhoods so they would be aware at least that there's a development or something that's going to happen. Because there, I think, again, if you're not in early and you don't know what's going on to try to catch up and get up to speed, sometimes with some of the, or be able to, it's being in front of it a little bit so you can see the issues. And, and if you're trying to catch up, you're never going to be able to take that big picture view and really look at it and you're always trailing behind. So, I feel like both your comments are, are very good and I appreciate them and I understand all the work you do. And I would just say, so in our neighborhood, we have the Monroe Street Apartments, Hillside Development. There is now an application or a pre-app, one in for the Luther Stein, Luther Davis Auto site on 32nd. And then there are all kinds of other just variances and things that have happened. So, anyway, that's all I have.
Thanks.
Hey, good evening. My name is Matt Rinker. I'm the Chair of the Ardenwald Johnson Creek Neighborhood District Association and I have the benefit of having an excellent land use chair who pretty much summarizes things for, microphone comes around. But yeah, definitely, we're looking at a lot of growth between the Murphy-McFarland, the Hillside and designated sort of commercial, potential commercial residential use along 32nd. Yeah, we're looking at potentially 40 to 50% increase of just housing units within our neighborhood as a whole and that's huge. So, it's a challenge to keep abreast of what's happening, so that's about it.
Does work, okay. I'm not going to spend a lot of time because I want to hear from the NDA leaders, but I'm Jason Wax. I work with the NDA leaders on a variety of things. I guess for me, I guess I, I just want to thank all the NDA leaders for coming tonight, but also just putting all the time that you can. I mean, I think one of our biggest challenges is volunteer fatigue. A lot of folks around this table have been doing this for a long time. And now that we're really busy and there's a lot of things happening, we thank them for digesting this stuff and helping their neighborhoods understand what it all means, when they receive it, how to get involved, you know, on a regular basis. But I'm sure they would love people out there, folks are watching, for more people to get involved so that they're not having to always, because I think that's what we run into is a, you know, our folks have to do a lot and we're asking them to do a lot constantly. So, just more people, but again, thank you for being involved. A lot of the folks here have become experts in this subject, so that's a really big benefit for the city, so.
Ray Bryan, Historic Milwaukee Chair and a member of the Land Use Committee. Yeah, thanks for having us tonight and I certainly think an annual meeting would be great. I think that the city does a great job of communicating with us as far as, you know, sending out the emails and things like that. The information is available for those who want to pursue it. I completely agree with what David and others are saying about getting involved early because by the time you do go to the Planning Commission, it, you know, you might impact a small change, but, you know, not, nothing really major that, in what I've been involved in. Some issues that maybe I or our neighborhood have, one of them is just zoned open space and I wasn't necessarily referring to the City Hall property, but just up in the neighborhood where I live, our, our parks are the schools and they are zone R7, most of them. And so, if things ever happened, you know, they could go away and I would, don't have And so, if things ever happened, you know, they could go away, and I would, don't have a good answer to that. But more zoned open space, I would love to see that in the comp plan, just for, you know, for up in the neighborhoods. The other thing that I was going to say that we've talked about, and I'm not sure if we're going to do it, but we'd like to do something to reach out to new people. I joined the NDA based on my experience of where I lived in the past. I had an issue, and I made a, decided that when I move, I'm going to join the NDA, and I did. And so, I'm thinking that if we can get to people when they move in, before they get involved in other things, that might be something that would help. There was one last email from Denny about neighborhood boundaries.
Oh, yeah.
And I know David's worked real hard on one for his neighborhood. I feel that a lot of people where I live are more oriented to Historic Milwaukee and the downtown as opposed to Lake Road. I own a home in Historic Milwaukee, but I actually live in the Lake Road neighborhood. The street I live just divides, so my neighbors across the street are in a different neighborhood than on the other side. And if there is a creative solution to do that and solve that and keep the peace, that would be great.
Okay. Thanks. Take it over to Howie. Oh, yeah, he's got a microphone, so he's good.
I'm Howie Oaks with Llewellyn. I'm the treasurer there. Wear a few other hats, doing our concerts and helping out with the solstice. So, the one thing we spend most of our money on and the one thing we try to raise money at. And definitely, you know, I would love a meeting, an annual meeting, sounds great. You know, I think in our neighborhood, we're in a little bit different situation where we would love to see some development, but more in the services area. And I think the whole idea of this neighborhood hubs, really, a lot of that came out of our neighborhood because we're, along with Linwood, in a desert. You know, there's no place to walk to. We have to have our neighborhood meetings outside of our neighborhood because there are no meeting places. So, that's pretty frustrating to sort of be in this desert of services. And just small neighborhood services, you know, I think the trick would be, how do you bring development that doesn't really overwhelm the neighborhood and become a destination for people outside the neighborhood, which is kind of challenging. You know, we've struggled with getting people involved. We've seen an uptick, and I think, you know, a lot of it, it just takes the right person that's interested in these issues. Certainly, if there's an issue, it gets people there. And I joke that, you know, we need more issues. But the problem is, you know, it's really easy to get people fired up and scared and use fear.
Right.
You know, it's very easy to send out a flyer and get people angry to come to a meeting. It's harder to get them to do the day-to-day, you know, come over time and deal with these issues that really can make your eyes glaze over. I mean, having this early, you know, getting this information early is great, and we do. You know, I think the city does a good job about sending out all the land use applications, and we're going through all those. And it's difficult, you know, it takes time for a lot of this stuff to sink in. So, we do our best to, you know, to really try to dig into that early. But I like the idea of maybe the pre-app meeting, you know, having that. Although, sometimes the pre-app meetings are more what can I do sort of things. So, I'd be curious how that might, you know, sort of drive into people getting upset about something that might not actually happen. But yeah, I think trying to come up with a way to, you know, people are super busy. I mean, we've, we struggle with, you know, people in our neighborhood that are, you know, just trying to make ends meet and to have them really get involved. And we're blessed with sort of the small handful of people that we have in our neighborhood. But, you know, we do a lot of outreach, especially at our summer concerts, and try to get people involved and explain. You know, I think a lot of it's the education, but a lot of it is, it's really, it's hard. You know, it's easy to get upset and get people to a meeting when there's an issue, just grabbing, you know, one issue. But I think the trick is trying to find citizens that, you know, want to do the sort of boring long work and be at the meetings every time, even if it's not, you know, something that's exciting. Because that's where, you know, a lot of our discussions come from. The other big land use thing that we're dealing with, Mullen, which is, there's a lot of right-of-way there, but, you know, sort of a patchwork of roads. A lot of building has happened, and, you know, what this road would actually look like. So, we're sort of taking it on ourselves, and have done a lot of tours and trying to figure out kind of what could be done. And then also dealing with a lot of sort of dead-end streets that could, you know, there are right-of-ways to go through, and we've sort of have done an inventory of those to say, "Well, does it make sense to ever put a road through here?" Or would just pedestrian or bicycle access or a walking path? There's all sorts of dynamics there because obviously, the people that live right there have some opinions. So, we're, you know, doing our best to try to get ahead of some of that stuff and actually generating some land use issues, I guess. Stefan can speak to that, you know, a lot more than I could. But yeah, I think anything the city could do to educate people. I like the idea of, you know, community involvement committee. You know, everybody has different ways of communicating, and, you know, the broader we can do that. But there, especially when it comes to land use, it's very difficult to distill some of the stuff down into an email that someone's going to read when they get home and expect to get across the complexities of some of these things. And I think a lot of people, you know, get frustrated. They want it to be very easy, and they want these things to be, you know, something that I can, you know, read in the morning and understand it and sort of check that off. But it takes a lot more work. And, you know, I really feel blessed to be in a city where people do step up and take that extra step and, you know, really try to make their home a better place. So, hats off to all those folks. Anyway, I'm rambling.
I'm Zach Perry. I'm Chair of Linwood Neighborhood. And luckily, I'm sitting next to Howie because he just said everything I needed to say. But no, similar concerns in Linwood. You know, we're east city with Llewellyn. We're unfortunate to have the title of the worst or the lowest walkability score in the city of Milwaukee. And that's because we have no sidewalks, and we have no access to and from any of the amenities. We also, as Howie mentioned, struggle with places to meet. I had to cancel my meeting for Thursday because we don't have a venue, and everything was occupied. And we just don't have restaurants or places to convene. We're fortunate that with that walkability score, that we were able to receive some SAFE money to do some improvements along Linwood in front of our school. Because as a neighborhood, we're very much concerned about the safety of the children to and from school. The problem with poor walkability is it encourages people to drive to school and drop their kids off because it's not safe to walk their kid. And that only builds on the problem. And so, you know, we basically, kind of with this whole idea that the city floated about neighborhood hubs, struggled with the idea of what that could look like in the east part of Milwaukee. It seems that we just don't have opportunities, and we have open space, but, you know, it could be developed very easily. A lot of the open space in our area is privately owned. And, you know, as much as I tried to encourage the city to maybe look at those as potential hubs, you know, obviously, that's challenging because they're privately, you know, there's money to be made there. The, I think the, you know, a lot of it for us is, the events that we're doing, we're doing, you know, good neighborhood outreach. We probably have 20-ish people, 30 maybe, that come to our meetings on a regular, which has been great for us. I think it's also like Howie has already mentioned, it's, there's a lot of people. We're fortunate to have an engaged community. I would support an annual meeting with Planning Commission in the neighborhoods. I don't know if that would trump or be in addition to the leadership meetings that already occur, but I think those are very valuable as well. It's the neighborhoods. As I feel my biggest role as the neighborhood chair is to bring those emails and try to distill them into relevant information and provide that to the community. But just as Jason already mentioned, it's, there's a level of fatigue that hits people like us that are all wearing multiple hats. And it is challenging to kind of present all that information and feel like you're not forgetting to say something that's important, you know, that you're missing. And so, I struggle with like all the things that we all do, which is normal life and city life, and trying to make sure that I'm presentable on both fronts. And so, it is, it'd be great to get more people, but that's, people unfortunately entrust that I'm doing a good enough job that they don't have to come to the meetings. And that's a challenge. We did, as was mentioned earlier, our big to-do was the barriers that were put in at Linwood and Monroe. And that got a lot of people to our meetings, and I think that was good, but none of them really came back more than a couple times. And so, we're going to continue to do community outreach and try to better the space that we have. But I do hope that, you know, we see some focus from the city and from planning to the east side of 224. You know, we've got 85-plus percent of our community lives on that side of the road, and we've got nowhere, you know, we can't get to downtown. You know, I think down, I love Milwaukee, have been a resident in the city for 11 years. And I'm in the neighborhood chair for most of those years because I like this place. And, but the challenge as I drive to this meeting is that it's hard to get down here. And I really think that it would be, I hope that the Monroe project creates, one way or another, a connecting space for us to commute, to utilize the resources that we're paying for downtown. Thank you.
That was a lot. I'm Stefan Lashbrook. I chair the Llewellyn Neighborhood Association. Howie didn't mention it, I don't think, but Howie and I are also on the Comp Plan Advisory Committee. So, you'll see us again when you get to hearings, I'm sure. Let me see, I could just kind of tag on to some of the things that Howie already said. The no-meeting place in Llewellyn does kind of stimulate the conversation about hubs for us, maybe more than some other neighborhoods. Our neighborhood meeting tomorrow night's going to be at Clackamas Community College, the Harmony Road campus, which is not at all convenient for people, but it's a spot, and they offered. And it's at least handicapped accessible, which is better than some places we've been in the past. I have a different perspective of a lot of this stuff because I worked in local government for 45 years before retiring, did just about everything you can imagine in that. And in all those years, I worked for seven different cities. I never saw the kind of participation that Milwaukee generates in open houses on big community-wide issues. I go back to the vision statement process, all the various things, whether it's about solar access or climate change or any number of subjects like that. This is a community that will fill a room with people who really care and will take the time to let you know what they think. That is really unusual. I've worked in much bigger cities that didn't get that level of participation. So, I'm just saying, when you're trying to expand outreach, which I think is a great idea, don't forget all the good work that's already gone on in that front. And I give credit to people in this room for some of that, and people who sit in this room on other nights. Howie mentioned Mullen Street. And if you've never walked on any part of it, it's an experience. And you can, there's a couple interesting things about Milwaukee, about Llewellyn in particular. First of all, you notice we're a neighborhood with a whole bunch of unincorporated islands. That's kind of intriguing as you look to the future. But the first road shown going east to west, north of King there, kind of in the middle, you'll notice it goes for a couple blocks and then stops. Then it goes for a block and then stops. Then it goes for a couple blocks. And the Planning Commission has dealt with that fairly recently with an application that turned into a variance process right at 43rd. That was only, I mean, you struggled with it, and it's a characteristic of that whole, the whole situation, east and west, probably at least over to 56th, I guess, all the way to Stanley, really. I bring it up because it's a hot issue for a bunch of our property owners who live either along Mullen or along Logos, probably some along King also, that want to know what the future holds for their properties and for this street, whether, you know. And I'll be really blunt about it and say, it makes no sense to me that that would end up a 50-foot-wide right-of-way carved through there, given that part of it's forested, part of it's got really weird topography. To me, it cries for a public outreach process to the property owners along there, saying, "What do you want? And what's the minimal amount of improvement that can meet the needs?" And understanding that includes, you know, emergency access and utility access and all those things. So, it's been a hot issue for us. I've walked the Mullen Street right-of-way with a group of neighbors, with the city manager, with the city engineer, and I've encouraged the new community development director to walk it. And I hope she's done so by now. Because even though there's no city money to do it and no known grant money to do it, I really, to me, it cries out for a master planning process to get all those people involved and sort it out. And if at the far end of that, a 50-foot right-of-way ends up being a necessity, then so be it. But I really doubt that that would be the outcome if you got all those people involved. I guess the last thing I'd offer, I was intrigued by the comments about variances because there are some places that just don't grant them. They don't happen. And here, I've seen kind of a struggle at the staff level and Planning Commission level where there's some situation where the strict interpretation of the rules really isn't appropriate for the outcome that you really want to see happen for a development. But that, I think it's often a stretch to say it really meets the variance criteria at a strict interpretation. So, I guess what I'd suggest is that since you and the staff are about to embark on a major code revision process that follows all the policy work on the comp plan, I'd urge you to have somebody, maybe an intern project, have somebody go back and look at all the variances that have been approved in the last 10 years, and see if there are code changes that would better address the things that you ended up having to deal with through variances. So, my humorous outtake on that is, one city where, at my going-away party when I was leaving that city to go to work for another city, a planning commissioner who'd been on the Planning Commission for 25 years said, "Well, Stefan, it's been fun working with you, but I'm really glad you're leaving." And I said, "Well, why, Dick? I thought you liked me." And he said, "Two variances have been approved on your watch, and I'm here to say there were none approved in the 20 years before that." So, I'm just saying, some people take those things a little differently than others.
Thank you. Wow. That was good. That's a lot of great feedback. And I think, you know, this is long overdue to have this conversation. So, it's great to start and have some of these topics here that came tonight. And so, I think my fellow planning commissioners are probably waiting for me to offer them the opportunity to talk, which I will. But before I turn it to them, I will say, just again, I think that there's a lot of good opportunity for engagement. And to Howie's point, people that are working, maybe multiple jobs, don't have time to read code, don't want to read code, go to boring meetings and get involved, it's just not something that rises to the top. And so, if there's, I think there's got to be ways that we can kind of make it more interesting for people to understand how decisions are made and how, what processes are involved without, you know, reading through codes and going through agendas for two hours and doing that kind of stuff. One idea, and I loved the folks that were talking about different tours and walking tours. I think, I think there's definitely an opportunity in my mind to look at the hubs and maybe try to arrange walking tours in the summer. That would be a fun way to get people to come out and get to know each other and the landscape. And then, you could weave in some of the technical stuff in there, so it's an educational opportunity as well. But it's not in a meeting, reading more documents, you know, but it's more of an active way to engage. And so, you know, I invite any thoughts that you guys have about how that And so, you know, I invite any thoughts that you guys have about how that could be more engaging for new people, you know, and for some of the regulars that come to the meeting to maybe reinvigorate them. So those are my comments. I'm, I'm done and I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn this way and Commissioner Himmer can offer his thoughts and comments and response and, and then we'll continue on with the other commissioners.
Thank you, Chair Travis. I want to thank each and every one of you in this room. You all know that I've been to one of your NDA meetings, probably even two of them, uh, in a year's time. You guys do a remarkable job. Uh, and, um, you know, the, the people that, uh, that are there, they are active, they are caring. You're right, sometimes you, you need an issue. To Zach's point, I go to the Linwood NDA meeting on a regular basis, we do, we're 25-30 strong every single time. And we're not just there to raise issues, we're there to socialize a little bit and we're there to clap at Zach when he does good and boo at Zach when he does bad. So, uh, it's kind of, it's kind of fun for us, so. But I, I just want, uh, I want you guys to, to think about this and you mentioned your leadership meetings and so, um, maybe one way that you guys, um, could, uh, work, work together more of as a cohesive, uh, unit. And when I say that is, is that there are multiple projects that go on that affect all of your guys' NDAs, uh, like the Path to Railroad that covers both Linwood and, um, Hector Campbell and probably affects a little bit of Ardenwald. We could talk about the Stanley Greenway and how come that hasn't been developed, which affects Linwood and Llewellyn together. The Monroe Greenway Project, which affects all of the east side. Take Kronberg Park with Island Station and Historic and, um, I just, I, I, I hope that in these leadership meetings that you guys have, discussions amongst each other on, hey, do we like this, uh, project? Can we work together on this project to maybe raise it up on the CIP or to, uh, or, you know what, maybe we like Monroe more than we like the railroad one, how about we all push to, you know, raise the Monroe one on the CIP and we lower the railroad one? Just kind of one of those kind of suggestions. My, my other question is, and I don't really know the answer to this, and I don't know if anybody could tell me about the answer to this, but the problem is, is that you may get a notice of, of, uh, an application, right? And, uh, it may come a day after you had your meeting. So now you have a whole nother month before your meeting comes, uh, and if there's two, if there is a worry of time lag, um, that, you know, sometimes, Christine, bless her heart, she brings the, uh, the stuff to the thing and, you know, it's, the meeting's in two days to discuss it. And so how is she supposed to prepare, talking to the NDA plus, uh, trying to get the information back to us in a timely manner? And so I, I don't know if you guys have ever had the discussion or the desire that, you know, maybe we can set up these applications and stuff so that it falls within, you know, two weeks before our meeting and then we don't, and then it can't be delivered to the Planning Commission until two weeks after the meeting, so you have a chance to discuss. But once again, thank you guys for all of the hard work. I mean, uh, trust me, I know how much that it takes. And by the way, if your venue ever falls short, the Milwaukee Museum can sit up to 18 to about 25 people. Ray just had his, uh, meeting there. Uh, it is a nice little venue to have it, something a little bit different. You guys can bring in food, make a mess. David Asherburner comes by the next day with a broom and cleans it all up. So it's a wonderful, wonderful thing to do. So just to let you know that the museum is always open.
Except for Zach's meeting this week.
Right, right, yeah. Well, that got rejected.
So I, I'd like to respond to that in part that we've struggled with the, you know, here's the notice of, of, uh, city staff requesting comments by this date and the date is three days before our meeting, you know? So that's really no venue for us to talk about it. Um, and the only, and I realize you, you've, you've got the 120-day rule you bump into at the far end of the process and that really does happen. So I, I get that, uh, the only thing I can think of, barring NDA participation in pre-app meetings, which, um, is, could be a good idea, could be a bad idea, uh, but it would, would be just a staff notification that's informal saying, "Hey, we've had a pre-app on this, we're, we're moving forward with it, you need to know that."
Yeah, that was actually my thought, too. Yeah.
And that would be like, come in and find out more about it.
Right.
So that we have a chance to, to even meet or, and formalize some stuff, so.
Yeah.
Really appreciate hearing from everybody tonight. Um, the, uh, in my experience, um, working with an NDA equivalent in unincorporated Clackamas County, just to the south of here, um, the Oak Grove Community Council, a community planning organization, uh, which is the, really an equivalent of an NDA except that our population is about 30,000 people. Um, and we're only able to get up about 50 people to, you know, a meeting, um, you know, every month, uh, which, you know, sounds good, but when you're drawing from a pool of 30,000, it's, you know, it's tough. It's, it's hard to get people, uh, to, to meetings, especially over a very large geographic area like, um, like that CPO boundary. As a, as the land use chair, uh, you know, in, in that, for that organization, for that area, um, you know, I, I experienced basically, you know, what all of you are experiencing. And it's interesting to hear your feedback on this because it, it really, um, you know, really echoes a lot of my complaints about, about the processes, um, you know, with respect to the county, but, you know, it's, it's all driven by state law. And so, um, you know, the 120-day rule or 100-day rule for housing or, you know, whatever is, um, it applies to, to, you know, to all of us. And, uh, one of the things that I've been asking for, uh, for years now is, you know, that notification at the time of a pre-application conference and the opportunity to submit comments, uh, as a community planning organization about, you know, that would just be included in the pre-application conference notes that the applicant receives. Um, it's just an opportunity to, you know, whether, you know, so I mean, in some cases like, um, you know, a block away from the Park Avenue Max Rail, uh, Light Rail Station, uh, there was a pre-application conference for, um, for an, you know, commercial building. Um, it wasn't any more specific than that, but being notified of that, having the opportunity to submit comments, that would be then shared with, you know, the, the applicant. Um, you know, we could have had an opportunity to describe what our community wanted to see from that site. You know, what opportunities does that present to us? And, you know, and, and instead they, you know, talked to some people in Oregon City, you know, that work for the county about what their options were under the code and, and, you know, they didn't do anything with it. And two years later, there's still nothing happening, it's a gravel lot. Um, and the Light Rail Station's been there since, you know, for, for four years. And so it's, um, you know, maybe, maybe the opportunity, maybe the community's saying, "Hey, here's what we'd like to see." You know, maybe that would have inspired an applicant to have more discussions and see what other, you know, how else they could explore, you know, opportunities for that site. And so I, I feel very strongly personally that, that that early engagement, uh, I mean, that's the opportunity to do it. You know, by the time it ends up here at the Planning Commission, um, you know, they're already, they've already invested a lot of money in, in preparing plans, you know, for what they want to do. And, and so it's, it's really tough to affect that trajectory at, at that point. So really that, uh, that opportunity I think would be great, um, for the NDAs. Uh, the, uh, the concept of a, um, community, uh, committee for involvement, um, you know, like the county has, I think is, is another good idea and it, you know, really getting people who are really passionate about communications and outreach and knowledgeable about it, um, you know, is, I think, a really effective means of, you know, of trying to, you know, of, you know, improving the website and, and getting, you know, getting more people to the table and more people, you know, understanding or, you know, and just getting the messaging out to more people, I, I think is, um, you know, a better strategy to have a dedicated committee for that than having it kind of fall into the, the responsibility of, you know, the Planning Commission or staff, you know, to, to figure out. Having people who are really engaged or passionate in that, I, I think is really important. So, uh, you know, again, I, I thank you all for, for sharing your opinions. Um, you know, I can, I can relate, you know, the same things that frustrate you frustrate me. Um, you know, it's, it's different being on this side of the table. Uh, you know, I was involved in the CPO for years before, um, you know, ultimately, you know, joining the Planning Commission. And, um, you know, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's interesting, um, the challenges that we're up against, you know, in interpreting the, ultimately the law, uh, and applying the law to decisions that can be appealed. And those appeals go to, you know, can be carried up into, you know, where, you know, the Oregon Court of Appeals is making decisions about how we came to our conclusions. And so, you know, it has to be by the book, it has to be legally defensible. And so it, um, you know, it, as non-attorneys, it puts us in, you know, a, a position where we're relying a lot on staff and, and the city attorney to provide the guidance that, that we need to make these decisions. And so it does, it can be a challenge sometimes to, you know, when you've, you may not agree with how the ordinance is drafted, but that's the language that's in place and that's what we have to go by. And, um, and so it, you know, you just have to do your best, but, um, you know, we're, you know, my impression from, of my other commissioners, I know certainly for myself as an individual commissioner, that, you know, I'm, I'm aware of these challenges and I'm trying to, you know, balancing, you know, these, these concerns and everything while we're up here, you know, deliberating and, and trying to interpret the law and make the right decision. Um, and it's, it's a challenge and we're not always doing things that make, you know, people happy that are on the other side of the table, but, um, but, you know, I enjoy the opportunity to do it. And, um, and I, I think that the perspective I have of doing what you do, um, you know, in my, in, in, in the community to the south is, um, offers me, you know, that perspective that, you know, to, in my analysis, I'm not, I'm not just looking at this as really dry legal decisions that don't have impacts on, you know, on people, but, um, I, I feel the same way about, you know, my other commissioners, that we're, you know, we're all weighing this as citizens, as, you know, community members as well. And so we appreciate the opportunity to, to do that for you guys and, and I again appreciate everybody coming here and sharing, you know, what, what concerns you.
So I really appreciated your comments about, you know, uh, your acknowledgement of the folks who are coming to the meetings, you know, month after month, doing the hard work of trying to make things better. Uh, and so I think that that group is all in here and so, you know, my thanks are for, for those groups of people. The folks who maybe have a one-off complaint, we're going to listen to them, you know, and, um, and put those in perspective and, uh, and, and make decisions on those and that kind of thing. But I really appreciate the folks who are in, you know, month after month, uh, doing the hard work. One of the sort of themes I hear is that there's a lot of information out there. You can find it, but it takes a while. It's kind of in pockets, uh, and that kind of thing, and it takes some effort to, to draw that information out, synthesize it, decide what's a priority for you to go to this meeting, be involved in this and that kind of thing. Uh, and so that can be a challenge. Uh, you know, it's, uh, but there's a lot of information out there. I mean, Jason has a great sort of synthesizing email that comes out, I think it's every Friday, is it, Jason? You know? "I'm going to hurt your feelings, Jason." Sometimes I get a lot of emails and I'll open it, okay? But I know there's a lot of good information in there, so even I can't absorb it all, you know? And so I, I don't know if there's really a solution to, uh, providing even more, you know? I'm, I'm all for more communications, better ways of communication. As I heard this discussion, I said, "Maybe we need a podcast." I don't know. Uh, I'm open to all kinds of ideas, you know, to, to synthesize information and make it more available and that kind of thing. Um, but it's still going to require some effort to get that information out and act on it, you know? And, um, so I wouldn't beat ourselves up too much about, uh, about that because I think that the city and, and the folks in this, uh, in this room do, do a lot to try to get that information out. So, uh, you know, I, I'm all for these ideas about, uh, better communications and that kind of thing. I will tell you that beyond emails and the pilot, which has a lot of good information, you just can't beat personal contact. And, um, so I, I realize that, um, uh, people will just shake their head and say, "The city council or the planning commission don't know what they're talking about." And sometimes we don't, okay? Uh, but, you know, if they don't know us, they don't see us, it's easier for them to, to sort of form those kinds of opinions and the same thing, that kind of goes across the board. And so I, I think it's great that we have an idea about bringing the, the NDAs, uh, in here every year. And, uh, I, I recently went, I go to my, my NDA meeting, you know, fairly regularly. I, I miss a few meetings, but, uh, I went to another NDA meeting that, you know, I don't live in and that kind of thing. And so, um, uh, maybe that's something that we could do, okay? Now, I, I say that going like, "Oh, you know, Massey, you're going to send me to another meeting?" But I, I just think beyond emails and the pilot and everything like that, uh, if you know the person, um, uh, you can associate, uh, you know, a city councilman, a, a planning commission person with a face, a real person, um, that might go a long way to sort of developing a deeper, uh, communication and relationship.
Yeah. No, I think that's right. I think, um, just to respond to that, you know, when, during the Comp Plan update, I think we all tried to get out, many of the CPAC members tried to get out and go to the neighborhood meetings, um, this fall to try to, to try to foster that, right? And, and share with people. Um, and so more of that, I think, is, is good. And so if we can kind of maybe schedule that out and work with you guys to say, "All right, when would be a good time?" And maybe it is about a particular topic or maybe it is, you know, in like a tour or walking tour kind of format or some way, but to get out, you know, you guys come meet with us once a year, we commit to going out to the neighborhoods once a year and having some face time, whether it's at a meeting or an event or something like that. So I think, you know, those are two good, easy-ish next steps, I think, to agree on that we can, uh, open that channel and, and do that in 2020 and go from there, I guess. And then, um, as it works out for you to reach out to us individually as, as people, we can meet and have coffee and hear more. I mean, that's allowed, right, David? It's, you just can't have a corn, we all can't go to beer store and get together.
No more than three of us.
No more than three of us.
We'll discuss items.
We'll pick the nice ones.
And discuss items.
Yeah.
Okay.
And sit there quietly.
But, you know, anyway, go ahead, Howie.
I was just going to say, I'd just like to add that planning talk with David Levitin would be an awesome podcast.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, we have another next step. Thank you.
In fact, I mean, did, was the Planning 101 class recorded?
It was not, but that's something that we can look at.
I think that's part of the answer.
Yeah.
As we were preparing for that Planning 101 and trying to bring all these materials together, then somebody pointed out that actually on the website, uh, previous planning director Katie Mangle had done something similar and pretty much everything that we were looking for was already in one place. So, uh, it was good for us to find that before we actually got to the meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, a serious note about that and kind of what you meant about, you know, talking about personal connections. You know, I've, I've run into a lot of people that, you know, have some preconceived ideas. You talk about, "Hey, come to this meeting," or, "Why don't you get involved in the neighborhood?" Oh, they've already decided what they're going to do. You know, "My voice isn't going to be heard. This has already been decided, it doesn't matter what I say." And having been involved in the visioning process and the, you know, the CPAC, um, I get really frustrated now when I hear someone say that decisions are already made, um, having seen, you know, the effort that goes in and, and the outreach. But I think there's a whole group there that, that does need and maybe, you know, these Planning 101 and anything you can do to sort of, uh, you know, reach the, the next-door crowd who is, you know, I see a lot of distrust and maybe because the NDAs are coming out of the city, you know, there's a little bit of like, "Oh, am I really going to be, my voice really going to be heard?" And I really appreciate the email that, or you put, made a post on there, you know, basically if I'm remembering right, recently, that was like, "Come to this meeting, your voice is going to be heard," you know? And we've, we've tried to sort of reach out to some of the, you know, some of the groups that are, I would say distrustful for some reason, um, or just don't know, you know, that you can come and really be heard, um, and that it's not sort of got this rubber stamp somehow from the city. So I think there's, there's a challenge there, um, that, you know, if we could figure out a way to, to get people to realize these decisions aren't, you know, they can be just as involved in making these decisions as everybody else in this room, so.
Well, and I think these type of events, I mean, the Planning 101s and just kind of establishing the hierarchy of planning and that there are certain applications where they're, were required to have clear and objective standards, that if you meet them, your project gets approved and it really unfortunately doesn't matter. your project gets approved and it really unfortunately doesn't matter how much public comment there is. If, if there's, if it's codified by an ordinance and there's clear and objective standards, there needs to be, you know, these standards so that people, that developers and others can build to them. And so explaining where there's quasi-judicial decisions, where there is more subjective criteria involved. Um, and so, yeah, I think that the more information, the better.
Great. So, um, we have a comment from the audience. If you can make it brief, sir, I kind of want to summarize and wrap us up here.
Are you there? Yeah. I just, I, I, the last statement made about the, uh, recording, I take exception to because I reached out twice to the city. I, I ran into Kathy Heist at a meeting and asked her. So three times before the meeting even happened, I asked to have it recorded. And there was a conflict with the, uh, Hillside meeting that same night. And it just got kind of put off to, "Well, maybe in January we'll do it again." But then there you go, you're dragging people back down here again for another meeting. It seemed like a no-brainer to record it. I, I don't understand the conflict or the problem with that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. One last comment, please.
So I appreciate all your concerns. Twenty-two-year resident in the city of Milwaukee. I respect every single one of you in this room. I respect Dave Ashenbrenner for building a relationship over 22 years of time that had in, that endures. At this point in time, I am publishing a weekly digest specific to land use and transportation issues. I summarize all the week's meetings. I link all the agendas in the packets. I'm educating our community. This town can do the same. That's the end of my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So thank you all. Um, I, I think that, um, I think we've got a few ideas for things that we can do in this next year. You might have some other ideas. Please feel free to, to share them. We'll, uh, look for opportunities to come out and visit the neighborhoods and we'll get a time on to come back here. We'll look for additional educational opportunities that can be recorded in some fashion. And, uh, I think, I think we're making some good progress there.
And not to put pressure on you, when do the NDAs have to have in their public comments for us for our comp plan review?
Uh, well, they can submit public comments all the way through the public hearings. I mean, there's public hearings before the planning commission and the city council, obviously to incorporate them into drafts earlier, the better. Um, we would, um, we're, for the purposes of the public hearings, we have the draft policies that are featured in the document, the first draft of which you are reviewing tonight. Um, and then as part of the staff report is where staff, based on public comments, agency comments, other comments are going to be making proposed, recommended edits to the policies. So, um, that staff report will need to go out, um, for the January 14th meeting by January 7th. So I would say by the end of the year would be ideal, just so we can make sure that we reflect. Um, and that's just for the planning commission public hearing on January 14th. Then there will be additional opportunities for people to continue to provide comments directly to the city council as they consider the planning commission's recommendation. And that first city council public hearing is tentatively scheduled for March 3rd, assuming that we can get the planning commission recommendation within at least two meetings, January 14th and January 28th.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That's good, good closure, Commissioner Hemmer. Very good. So I say if we can take just a five-minute break to kind of reset and give us opportunity to talk individually here while we move, we're going to be, uh, talking about the comp plan next, but we're not going to be talking about policies. We're going to be talking in general about the format of the plan and, um, just those kind of high-level things and not talking about specific policies because we're saving those for January 14th. So anyway, thanks, thanks again for everybody coming tonight. We'll take a five-minute break.
And so we've basically reflected those changes in the updated land use designations. So we're not essentially rezoning any properties. We're reflecting what are the actual zoning density ranges. But basically, what you have before you tonight is a policy document that includes a new introduction, including incorporating the vision statement at the outset of the document to really tie the relationship between the vision and the Comprehensive Plan, kind of an introduction to land use planning within Oregon, within the metro region. And then it kind of gets into, we have five different chapters that coincide with the super actions that were developed as part of the community vision. And so within each of those chapters, we have multiple sections. The one chapter on safe and accessible transportation, we have not touched. We're carrying over the goals from the existing Comprehensive Plan. That section has been touched a lot more recently with the major update to the TSP in 2007 and then a more minor update to the TSP in 2013. We wanted to do another update to the TSP and then reflect updated policies and goals that result from that TSP update before we really get into that discussion. That's something that is on the work plan for the Planning Commission in 2020 through 2022. So yeah, there are a list of, just to kind of get into your review, if you look at your packet, item 6.2, pages two and three, I think the best thing for tonight is to really go through some of the questions that are included at the bottom of page two and to continue on to page three. We really want to get your input on the readability of the document, the way it's laid out graphically, kind of, we've been trying to convey information. It ended up maybe being a little bit longer than we initially thought. We wanted to have a nice brief document. There's still a lot of compliance out there that are a lot longer than this, but we felt like we needed to provide a good amount of kind of background information and regulatory context and things like that. But if you think that it's overkill in any one area, we would appreciate that type of kind of high-level inputs. The staff report, I think, anticipated that we were a little bit further along with the draft. There's still some things like the call-out boxes and some of the graphics that are missing that we continue to work on. We basically have one millennial in the office that actually knows how to use InDesign. And so when she's out for a full week of public engagement training and then there's Thanksgiving and then she's out on vacation, we don't get quite as much work done on the actual layout of the document. So she's going to continue to be working on that over the next few weeks as we approach the public hearing. And so there's still some opportunities to change some of the layout. I would say that we planned it this way, but we most definitely did not. But yeah, with that, I would just kind of open it up for kind of general comments and we can take it from there.
All right, thank you. All right. Any questions about the level of discussion that we're looking for tonight? Okay, let's just keep it in that framework. And so Commissioner Himmer, you have some ready comments.
Yeah, and so I just want the commission to know that I emailed to Denny and to David and actually to Chair Travis my comments. I am happy to have these comments be shared with the Planning Commission. I don't know if it makes a difference now that I've declared that I've sent them out, that you can now send it out to the rest of the group. I'm not really sure how that whole email thing goes. I don't think I need to go through line by line by line because it is, you know, two and a half pages. But there are some things that I would like to say on the public record. First of all, I want to say I do like, I love the way that it's laid out. And in fact, I like the fact that it takes this visioning thing, explains this visioning thing, then says, hey, because of this visioning thing, we are going to lay out this document this way. And you do a really good job of explaining that. And as a reader, it almost enthrels you to want to go a little bit more. I know you would never ever say that.
Enthraling Comprehensive Plan, that's a novel concept.
The other thing I really like is when you realize that there are conflicts of interest and just major, you know, housing, climate change, you know, system developments, all that kind of stuff, you say it. You say it in the introductions and you say it in the key issues. Look, we realize that there's conflicts with, you know, these two ideas, that they conflict with each other. You don't have to sit there and explain how they're in conflict, but you recognize the fact to the reader, hey, look, we realize that there are some conflicts in here and that they need to be addressed and that they will be addressed at some point in time. And so I really like that, that you're honest with yourselves, right? And I think most of the citizens that have been working on this are honest with themselves as well, that they do realize that there's some conflicts of, you know, desires and goals and how they're going to work together. So one of my big things is sometimes you capitalize city and other times you don't. I think most of the time that you want to capitalize it, if I'm reading that document correctly, maybe there's a few that you don't. And one of my big issues is that a proper name does not need a participle in front of it. You don't see, you don't say "the" David Leviton. So when you use a proper name like Milwaukee or if you're using city as Milwaukee, it does not need a "the" in front of it. Sorry, it's just one of my things.
Wow.
And that is throughout the document. But you know what? I'm not going to argue about it. Maybe somebody else learned different grammar rules. Actually, some people would say that grammar rules are some of the worst things that have ever happened to the English language because it's make it stale and doesn't allow it to progress. So I will leave it up to your person of that, to your grammar specialist to determine that. In the history section, I am very disappointed and it seems to be a theme with the city and that's because they're so focused on art. They forget there is a museum in this town dedicated to all aspects of history of Milwaukee and that they really engage well with the public. And so just, I mentioned a thing that you could say in there. And so I said, add something about a museum dedicated to all aspects of Milwaukee history. And your pictures that are the older time pictures, I know the city of Milwaukee supplied them to you, either Hannah or Scott, but we gave the Milwaukee, I'm sorry, when I say we, I say Milwaukee Historical Society owns those pictures. So we would actually like a courtesy of Milwaukee Historical Society on those photos as well. And then I made a suggestion that some of your history part is not necessarily the way that you should say it. And so on page 10, and when I say pages, I'm using the pages that are listed in the document corners, not the page, you know, the 6.2 page. So like on page 10, your second, your sentence about the Clackamas Indians, which she has marked too, I would say that's a little clunky and, you know, the culture still lives on with oral histories. So when you say something like sadly, the saga of those first peoples has been all but lost, I get why you put that in there, but it's not necessarily true. I mean, if you want to put in a sympathy statement, you know, you could say that we, that the white settlers spread disease and decimated them down to 78 people and then the rest were put onto, you know, Grand Ron Federated Tribe. You understand what I mean?
I do.
And then along with that, with some of the history, that, you know, we weren't, we were a rugged trade center, that is true, but, you know, you can't blame streets and stuff because really, actually, the river was your number one mode of transport and that's why towns flourished upon waterways is because it was. And you never really got froze over or isolated in the winter because the river was still your traveling mechanism. And roads didn't really exist really until, you know, after the railroads and automobiles. So it's just kind of, and I have specific suggestions that go into that. And then I also say that in the third paragraph of that history, after the electric urban rail line, that you say that, that you say city of Milwaukee was incorporated in 1903 and in the early 1900s, Milwaukee was known as a playground for the Portland elite and many immigrants like Japanese, Italians and Swedes came to begin family farming. So that you get maybe a little bit of an immigrant statement in there and it brings this gap from your 1893 to 1940s.
I hear that Commissioner Himmer wants to help you revise that.
I could definitely send a Word document of the history section that I'm sure that you could help out with, and I say that with all sincerity.
Yeah. All right, moving on from history.
Yeah, I'm done. I'm done. So then page 28, and then most of my other stuff is about repeat pictures, using the same picture over and over and over again. But then on page 28, do we still actually have CNCLCGs and CCSs? Aren't those all eliminated now?
No, we still have those.
I thought that we basically eliminated when we created the code for an NMU and a GMU.
No, so the NMU took over some areas, like specifically to implement the, basically the town center designation through metro, like neighborhood, essentially mixed use zones, but there still is limited commercial, neighborhood commercial. The CCS is the area for Milwaukee Marketplace. So there, we do still have a surprising number of commercial zoning districts. There just aren't very many areas with those designations. So these are all still current zones. I think things that we're looking at eliminating either through the creation of a neighborhood hub zone or expansion of the neighborhood mixed use zone. So I think a lot of these will go away.
Okay. So is it worth putting in this document that's going to last us the next 30 years?
Probably not. So let me go specifically to page 28. Okay, so you're in the land use categories. So yeah, if you look at, at the beginning, so towards the top of page 26, we do call out that we're going to be updating this as we start to get into specifically the middle housing work, but we're also going to be doing some neighborhood hubs work. So this is one section that would be updated as we do some of the Comprehensive Plan land use map work and as we start to do some of the actual implementation work on the development code.
And is that why we don't mention neighborhood hubs? I tell you, we don't have a code for neighborhood hubs either.
Because we don't currently have one. We kind of discuss them within the framework of land use, but they're not an actual zone. So where are we at? I think within the commercials zones, commercial zones, so on page 29D, it talks about neighborhood hubs, but there isn't, as of now, a zoning designation that goes along with that. And we don't have anything, they haven't been implemented. They've been discussed in policy language within the, within this draft Comprehensive Plan, but a big part of the 2020 work plan and we're going to be forming a, basically a Comprehensive Plan Implementation Committee is moving, you know, the transition between this policy work and moving on to the actual code work. And the kind of the three main focuses of that committee will be kind of middle housing, neighborhood hubs, and then a lot related to tree protection and tree canopy and other natural resource issues. We wanted to tackle all those things concurrently because they all have an impact on one another.
Oh, all right. And so this other big thing that really kind of bothered me, like in page 86, I'm going to use the example, where you say that the median house price increased by 92% from 2013 to 2019, which I would love that to actually be the fact because I think everybody in Milwaukee would have sold their house and bailed out real quick. I think, I think in another spot in the document, you actually used 50%, which I think is maybe still, on page 126, you use 50%. So double-check your math. So the way that I was taught to do percentages is you take the subtraction from your, from what was to what is and then divide that by the new what is. So for example, if the old house price was 140 and now it's 160, to get your percentage, you say 20 divided by 160.
No, it'd be 20 divided by 140 if you're talking about an increase. So if you're going from 200 to 250, I'm sorry, yeah, so I'm thinking about it.
You use 160 because the price increased to 160 and that's actually the actual percentage of the increase? And I understand that you guys are doing the math the other way. Check with your stats guy. I could be totally wrong. But so then although some of those percentages kind of play out that way, I think 92 is an error.
Okay, I'll look at that one specifically.
Because you use 50, and 50 is a big number too.
Yeah, I would say if you're going from 100 to 150, that's a 50% increase. It's not a 33% increase.
It's a 33% increase.
No, it's a 50% increase.
It is.
Okay, let's move on from the math. We're going to check the math.
All right. And then my other one is page 109. When we talk about our relationship to NCPRD and that, you say it that it's a form of an IGA. The reader probably doesn't know what an IGA is, so I would actually substitute a different word like relationship or partnership for that instead of trying to explain what an IGA is, but just use a general reference. And Elk Rock Island Park does not exist. It is Peter Kerr Park.
Didn't know that.
Per our rules of taking it over. And the last thing I really have, oh, page 127, basically define what is a jobs housing And in the organization section, you kind of just throw out, you kind of say, hey, you know, our businesses aren't very organized, but you have a really good example for the Milwaukee Downtown Business Association and what they do for First Friday. So maybe you could throw in a positive example of what organizations can do, if they work, business organizations can do when they work together. And like I said, this is all in the email, so you don't have to write all this down. And then my last really major comment is the format changes that happened on page 150. Your glossary, you started with bold and then you define and then all of a sudden it starts going into dashes. And I'm sure when your millennial comes back, she can fix that wire relatively easily, but I just got lost. I was just like, oh, wow, was that just?
Yeah, it gets all, it gets all wonky.
And I was like, oh, well, maybe they were just defining whatever that low income housing thing was. And then I was like, oh, no, it's all like that.
Yeah.
So those were just, those are my big, and then I have the small little details about the pictures I didn't like and using repeat pictures and just other little things.
Very thorough, well done. Thank you very much. Who wants to go next?
I'll echo the concerns about the, without focusing on substance too much, just, you know, generally about the way that the first paragraph of history just seems to be way too glossed over. I would love to see something more, you know, about the, you know, the people that preceded us here. And it just feels a little disrespectful and to just be so terse, I guess, about, you know, we just don't have any information, too bad. So that kind of sat poorly with me. But other than that, I don't have any specific content complaints. I think the structure is good. I'm really, really, really happy to see this, you know, as, at this point. You know, we've been working on this for a while and so it's really, it's really great to see it, you know, approaching, you know, the final product. And I'm really happy with what, with how it's been organized and everything. You know, I was initially really wanting to see all of the sections align with the state land use planning goals, but ultimately I like how you've broken it down, you know, because the land use goals aren't exactly logically ordered, so. But anyway, it's, you know, the, I think the structure is good. It's organized, you know, well. It's actually a pleasure to read. I read Newport's over the weekend. This is a pleasure to read. The, I mean, there's just, you know, there's a little bit more, you know, there's more lead-in, there's more context, there's more, you know, it's not just, oh, we're doing this because we have to. You know, it's, we're, you know, we're calling out a vision, you know, we're structuring a plan based on a vision. You know, it, you guys have done a really good job. I'm really happy with, really happy with this. And, you know, I think that, you know, yeah, I mean, I'd like to see, you know, more consistency, like, you know, one of the first things, you know, I saw was, you know, like the Max Orange Light Rail line and then somewhere else, it's the Max Orange Line Light Rail. You know, I mean, so there's some consistency things where I feel like, you know, yeah, we'll touch those up as we go along. It would be ideal to be pedantically consistent in a legal document like this. I think that the grammar is critical in a legal document. So, you know, I, you know, we can't pay too close of attention to consistency of language and verbiage and, you know, and when we say, I mean, I know we've already harped on this before, but when we say things about, you know, shall or, you know, various verbs, you know, or whatever, you know, let's be really deliberate about which, you know, and consistent with, you know, the exact language that we're using, you know. I also wanted to talk about kind of the policy synthesis, you know, where we're, you know, looking at the different conflicts, you know, and kind of which policies are kind of, you know, touching on the same subject matter but spread across different sections. Maybe we're not ready to talk about that yet tonight and so that's, that's fine. But it is just as a general rule, I think that unless a policy in one chapter is like overriding other policies, you know, from another, I mean, from another chapter, I think that the fact that the other chapter exists and calls out the policy is enough. Like when you're talking about, you know, housing and, you know, natural resources areas, for instance, you know, I don't think we have to be duplicative of the language in both sections, except where there's this specific instruction to override something that might be, you know, that you might intuit from reading the housing policies. You might, oh, well, this, you know, taken at face value, this would completely override the natural resources policies. Well, then call it out, you know, as saying what the hierarchy is of, you know, if there is an intentional hierarchy as opposed to it being a balancing act by, you know, because there may be, you know, certain situations where it's like, hey, you're just going to have to weigh the benefits or, you know, the costs and benefits of, you know, allowing a certain kind of development that creates certain kinds of impacts. But in some cases, we may want to be very prescribed about what is the hierarchy, you know, what, what should take, which policy should take precedence in certain, you know, in different sections. And so although I don't want to see a lot of duplication, I know we've, you know, when you're doing things every six months, you know, and you're kind of doing a block of policies and then six months later you come back and do it again with some different policies, there's going to be a lot of duplication. And I admit that I did a lot of that in my suggestions where it's like, oh, we're talking about public facilities. It's like, I'm going to talk about, you know, stormwater and habitat and wildlife connections and, you know, all this stuff. And well, we weren't really talking about natural, you know, resources, but we were talking about public facilities. And there's overlap there, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we need to enumerate all of those policies in both sides, you know, just really where we need to prescribe a resolution for an apparent conflict, I think, and where that's necessary to say, look, the priority is this policy, then call it out in the other section that says, hey, this is the, this is the priority over here, protecting the natural areas is the, is the priority or, you know, whatever.
And I think that is one area where, you know, input from the Planning Commission and also from the city council is going to obviously be needed. I mean, as we're, this is a legislative document and as you being an advisory to the city council, you know, areas where you feel strongly about, you know, if there are either conflicting priorities or priorities that where one needs to be elevated above the other, we'd very much welcome that input. Kind of this synthesis concept and evaluation of either overlap or redundancy or conflict. I would say if commissioners do have individual thoughts on specific topic areas and even specific policies in advance of the January 14th public hearing, I would encourage you to send those directly to me.
Yeah, and that attachment that was in the packet, you know, the electronic packet that, you know, spelled out what some of those were, I'm going to go back through that and I'll have more notes, you know, for, you know, that I'll share with you. But yeah, I agree. I think that, you know, there's certain cases where we can eliminate, you know, policies from different sections where, you know, it's, they're not a clear conflict and it's addressed, you know, substantially in another section. But there's absolutely going to be cases where we're going to say, like, really, the prescribed hierarchy should be this. And then in other cases, you know, it may be more appropriate to be ambiguous and to allow, you know, the different review authorities, the flexibility on a per-application basis to, you know, determine what, how that should be, how those policies should be applied. But really, you guys have done a great job with this. I'm so happy to see this as far along as it is. But really, you guys have done a great job with this. I'm so happy to see this as far along as it is. It just looks really great, and so thank you for all of your effort on this. And, you know, I look forward to, you know, working through some of those synthesis issues on the policies. And then, you know, I look forward to the public hearings. I think this is, this is really fantastic.
Thank you.
So David, producing 150 pages of anything is a challenge enough, but producing 150 pages with so many stakeholders and inputs and opinions and everything like that over a long period of time is that much harder. So I too want to salute you and the staff that's put this together. My one question or concern is to have a living document. And I asked this question before. What is gonna be the forcing function? Because I didn't see anything to say, okay, we're gonna revisit this periodically. And I'm not saying we revisit it every month, but, you know, I think that we have to have something in there, and I did not see that. Is there anything in there that I missed?
I'd have to look back through. I mean, we're kind of in a, the, kind of the general best practice with comprehensive plans is to update them like every six, eight, 10 years to do kind of a full update similar to this. Historically, that's been done in Oregon through what's called periodic review. The Department of Land Conservation Development essentially, especially coming out ever since the recession, hasn't had adequate staffing to really staff their periodic review program where they basically would require cities on certain cycles, seven to 10-year cycles, to be updating their comprehensive plan. And so I think, yeah, if we're, I would need to look back through it. It's such a long document. Sometimes I forget what's in there. But I think, I think that is a valid point as far as what is the mechanism for keeping this fresh without having to do it too often.
I would just refer you to, you know, I'm very familiar with the, you know, the PDCA cycle that's used in quality control. You know, it's, it's the plan, you know, we've got a plan, you know? And then the do, the perform is, as I would envision it, would be the code, you know? And then the C is the check. You monitor it, okay? Wherever that is, three years, five years, I don't know what the interval is. I think it needs to be out of ways because I don't think we're gonna know for a while until we have the plan in place, have the code in place, and then we go back and revisit it, says, okay, do we have any unintended consequences here? And we do that, and then we act to improve the plan. But I certainly don't want to be in a situation where we're only reacting and waiting for 30 years to revamp it. And again, I don't think it's a, it's a, it's a on the, you know, all the time kind of thing, but I think periodically we have to have some mechanism to go in, check it, monitor improvement. So that's, that's what I call the PDCA. I mean, a lot of people in the quality control business call that the PDCA cycle, and I can send you some information on that if you need it.
Yeah, I think that's something that we discussed as part of the vision as well. The vision document dated back to 1995, and then we began to update it in 2016, so it was already 21 years old. It was 22 years old by the time we actually updated the vision statement and the action plan. So I think once we get through the adoption of the policy document, I think we need to definitely have some discussion of what that mechanism and what that update schedule is. But we're gonna need to think about it concurrently with the vision as well. Anytime I think we think about, just given the hierarchy of
Yeah.
the vision, then the comp plan, then the implementing ordinances such as the development code, the zoning code.
There has to be some synchronization between those.
Yeah, that you're updating one, then it's like, well, we need to update the next thing, and then we need to update the next thing. And you don't want to be in a constant cycle where you're always doing something. But, I mean, if you have a three-year cycle every 10 years where you're doing the update, that still leaves you with seven years that you're relying on that doc, that series of documents.
Yeah. Well, it's not in here, because that was one thing that I was looking for is, you know, the timeline, timeframe, overall. I like the illustration that you created on page 15 with the, like you just said, the hierarchy. And then as we can maybe, maybe like fill that out a little bit more with timelines as we have them and use the same kind of hierarchy. I know that, and that's a consistency thing that I'm gonna look back through and make sure that, because I really like that hierarchy. I think that that is a simple way to describe processes. But what, in addition to, in addition to not like understanding the cycle and being clear on that, I think there's a little bit left to be said about why do we do a comprehensive plan? And maybe building out that section a little bit and what it is. And what's not included in there is how you revise parts of it. So you reference LCDC and acknowledging the plan, but, and then their role in monitoring the plan or if there's changes that need approval, that has to go through the post acknowledgement, plan amendment process. And so this, you know, may gloss over for some people, like, that's a lot of detail. But I also think people want to know, like, all right, so the state's providing oversight, Metro's providing some oversight, or there's, you know, things that we have to meet. Just to throw in an extra few clarifying pieces there, I think would be helpful for people that want that, you know, that understanding of the state and then the region and then the city. And then, yeah, the only other thing, I agree, I like, I like the chapters, I like how it builds on the vision. I like the vision to comprehensive plan diagram on page 21. I think that's pretty cool. I guess then the other thing, and I'm not sure for how it fits or where it belongs, but the stuff that isn't done yet, like the transportation plan and then the other stuff that, around hubs or there's other pieces in here that's, you know, we're gonna be updating this section at this timeframe to maybe call that out and somewhere else too, so it's not buried within the chapters.
Okay.
That there's like a pullout, like, all right, here's kind of what that's not done. And so, you know, I guess because it's a legal document, I'm not sure if that would be like an appendix or if that would be like in, in a like next steps piece or like a summary or conclusion. Because it just kind of ends, right? I mean, you go to transportation, there's a lot, that's gonna be updated. But then is there, does it meet with best practice of comp plans to do a kind of like conclusion and next steps?
Well, if I could, you know, jump on that topic, I guess, one of the questions I would ask is that you have a process, and I'm not talking about a complicated process, that basically identifies that. And it may be part of the PDCA cycle that I talked about is that if we have missing things, maybe you should identify some process that says the Planning Director, you know, develops a, you know, a gap memo yearly that says you're gonna accomplish that, rather than going into the kind of detail that I, I understand that why you want it. So that we have some, you know, we have some forcing function and some obligations that we're trying to meet. But I'm not sure you'd want that in the planning document because things are just gonna change.
Right.
And so if you just have a process by which, you know, the Planning Director, you know, comes up, and I'm just, I'm just throwing words out, a gap document or whatever, once a year or something like that, that, you know, goes to the Planning Commission and the City Council for approval, and then those things with a timeline are identified, rather than putting, continually trying to put things in the, in the planning.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's just a thought.
That's more...
So I think, yeah, that's definitely, I just did the 35-day notices for DLCD in Metro today because we're five weeks from the public hearing. And so I was talking with Jennifer Donnelly, our DLCD representative, and so I think that's something that maybe I can ask her because she's reviewed, obviously, not a ton of these, just because not many cities have done them, especially, you know, since 2008, 2009, very few cities have updated, at least done this amount of work. But just, we've tried to make it very clear that this is just the policy document, that we haven't touched the map, that we haven't touched the TSP, that we haven't touched any of the ancillary documents. But I agree, it's kind of abrupt in its ending. So just what is the mechanism for explaining kind of what the next steps are? Because if you include it in the text of the document, then to take it out, you're having to do a legislative amendment to strip it out of there. So is it something where we can have it as basically like a technical appendix or something that isn't actually part of the legislative document? So I can definitely ask her about that and kind of ask our consultants and ask Denny if he's thought about that because he's been in the field for a lot longer than I have, so.
So David, are any other cities coming to you saying, we want to see it so we can copy it, or?
No, I mean, I think we've...
It's gonna be up for an award. I mean, really, this thing is, it's very innovative.
We've had a lot of cities, a lot of the smaller cities, because basically if you look at who has updated their comprehensive plan recently, other than Lake House We Go, which isn't much bigger than us, Hillsborough's done it, and they dedicated like five or six FTEs to it, and they spent a lot of time, and they didn't have nearly the community engagement we had. They were very committee-driven. Obviously Portland, which was, you know, quite the process. You know, they essentially did the equivalent. They did the Portland plan, and they did the comprehensive plan. Now they're doing the RIP and all of these other code work, and that seemingly has been going on for 15 years. Other than that, there are cities, you know, and like North Plains did a very abbreviated version, but they updated their comp plan within a couple of months. And so the small cities tend not to do this much engagement just because they're not forced to do it. But it because we were in a place where we really hadn't done a major update in 30 years. It was something that the council wanted to do. So, yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, we hope that it is a model that we can do it. I mean, we've spent a lot of time and a lot of resources on it because we see it as a priority. We want it not to be a stale document. We, it's already starting. The vision is already starting to help to drive some of the budget decisions. It's referenced as different departments are doing their budgets, and that's what we wanted it to be. And so if the comprehensive plan can kind of be the next level down of that, ideally, that's gonna be the case.
Thank you.
No, I mean, it really, I'm gonna have to read Newport's now that you referenced it, but most, of, most comp plans are not uniquely structured in a way that reaches people outside of the land use system.
No, it is, it is very, it is very readable.
Yeah, this is very unique.
Yeah, and I will be honest, I feel bad because I did say that I wanted this thing printed out, but I actually figured out how to be able to do it without printing it out, so now I feel bad. But I did print out each of the policies, but I read this thing from front to cover, and I, actually, what I did is I just ignored the policies, you know what I mean?
Right.
And I still got the gist of everything that we were trying to do just by reading that. And I would say that most people, right after they got through about the first five pages, would probably quit reading the policies and just go to the summaries, right, and kind of read that. And you get it, I mean, that's the nice thing. You kind of read it and you, I mean, it, yeah, it's a little dry, but it's, it's a planning document. It's, it's very lively for a planning document.
Yeah, I think, you know, we obviously, with the comprehensive plan advisory committee, who had varying levels of experience and expertise in this, we, you know, for each of these sections, each of these topic areas, we develop like six or seven-page background reports that we then, you know, it's been a bit of a process and a bit of a struggle to distill those down to a couple pages because they were, you know, essentially largely text before, and now we were trying to shorten them and only be a few pages, including photos and graphics and maps. And so we essentially had to more than cut those in half and just keep, really, what are the key issues is really the major thing. We tried to have a couple paragraphs of background information, and then what are the key issues related to the policies that you're gonna be seeing? And so, yeah, I mean, it's been, we've gotten great input from the CPAC, you know, from other departments that have reviewed, you know, depending on what the topic area is. And so it has really been a citywide effort. And, yeah, I hadn't done a full update in Oregon before. I'd done one in Washington and worked on them in California as well. But, yeah, it's been, it's been a good experience.
And, you know, it's not really gonna be over. I mean, the thing is that, like, then the real work, I mean, more work happens. But it's, it's a good moment in time, I think, that, I think it's, you know, it'll be good to get the public's comment in the hearing and, you know, see what comes up during that process. But from my perspective, it's, you know, really in a good place, like what you were saying. Really proud of where this is at at this moment in time, and hopefully there'll be some constructive input through the hearing process. And then we'll move to adoption and then roll up our sleeves and do the code work.
Yeah, so in advance of that public hearing, you know, we'd like to have basically a finished version, not just a week in advance, but ideally by January 3rd, which obviously with the holidays and, you know, days off and stuff, it's gonna be an ambitious schedule. But, you know, we've really focused on getting the content out there, and we definitely, there's some copy editing that needs to be done and photos and verbiage and consistency in terms and things like that that we'll be focusing on over the next few weeks. But, yeah, I think we're in a good place.
Cool.
And so I don't really want to bring, bring this up, but it, this is a good example of, you know, the NDAs. I know. The NDAs struggle with, you know, things, like, for example, this document. Well, okay, so here we go. We get a first taste of it a week ago, right? The NDAs have their meetings typically at the beginning of the month, so. And then our hearing is at the beginning of the month, so they don't really actually have a time, the land use chair doesn't have a time to take this and do a presentation to their NDA. Or their schedule is already full, so that presentation isn't there. Nor, I don't want to sound the way that it's gonna sound, but, you know, nor was there, you know, this, this document and the planning department said, okay, well, we know what, we're gonna have this document ready by December 7th, so we'll span out throughout the NDAs and, you know, we'll talk about it real quick. And so I think that's where you get kind of into this, right, this public engagement kind of question. And as we heard from all the NDA leaders, they said that if you're not in at the beginning, you're screwed at the end, right? And so what I, I guess, and I think that a lot of residents or some residents felt that they weren't involved in the process, but maybe they didn't know about the process until, right, you got into it so far late that it was kind of snowballing itself. So I just, I just hope that we, that we take enough time to review this and we take enough time to allow for citizen input and that we are all very open to the comments that they make and that, you know, if it takes three or four sessions, we should take the time to do the three or four sessions.
No, and I agree with that, and obviously it's up to you to determine when you're ready to make that recommendation to the City Council. I think as far as the outreach to the NDAs and to others, including, you know, the email list that we've accumulated over the last couple of years. I mean, ultimately, it is a policy document, and what the feedback, what we really want the feedback on and what we've really desired feedback on is the actual goals and policies. Ultimately, it will be great to get the level of detail from other community members that might have expertise in copy editing or history or things like that.
No, no, but I think that, I think people still think of this as looking at the goals.
Okay, and...
What I really think is, is that the community believes that when they come in to come in and talk, they're gonna sit here and talk about policies and goals, not about the documentation.
And I think there is, and they are welcome to comment on those. And that has been the focus of our community engagement over the last two years is the research and development and synthesis of the goals and policies, and they've been available on the website since October 23rd.
Right, I don't want to, I'm not saying...
Oh, I'm not arguing, I'm just saying...
That it doesn't exist. I'm just saying that, you know, I would say that most of my NDA, I'm sure has not even studied one or two of these policies. And I don't know if it was the land use chair's fault for not bringing them up at each individual time, but now that this document exists, right, now it's much easier to look at it. And I think that's how the general public is, the general public that has not been involved in the process is going to be looking at this. And I think, and I think it's gonna be, I think that we should hold as many sessions as we can to get... sessions as we can to get as much feedback as possible, I guess. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to.
Oh, no, I agree. And as I said, ultimately, yeah, you need to be comfortable with your recommendation and that it reflects community input adequately. And so we are not, we don't, there's no 120 days here, there's nothing pressing us. We've, were required in our DLCD and Metro notices to indicate what the first public hearing was, which you need to provide 35 days notice, which we did today for that January 14th. There's no hard and fast date for when that final public hearing to actually adopt it by the council has to occur. And so we can push it out as needed, and we're not going to notice the, we're not going to issue our 30-day notice for the city council public hearing until we actually have a planning commission recommendation. So it happens when it happens.
Okay. All right, thanks for that.
All right, well, thank you.
Yeah, any other closing comments on this, or are we good for now?
I have unrelated comment.
Well, hold on, then let's close this and go to Planning Department, Other Business Updates, and then we'll go to Planning Commission. Do you have any other updates?
No, I would just, again, reiterate, reiterate, anybody watching or anybody that knows anybody that would be interested, just to visit the volunteer website on the, on the City of Milwaukee webpage and apply for planning commission. You can still get in there, you know, potentially for, for this wonderful project.
Yeah, that's right. Good plug, David. All right. We are on to Planning Commission Committee Updates or Discussion Items.
Go Navy, beat Army.
That's, that's your contribution.
That's my comment.
Okay. Okay, anyone else have any?
I just want to remind you that even if your daughter is having her 15th birthday party, it is still fun to visit Santa Claus on December 14th from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m. Come on down to the Milwaukee Museum at 3737 Southeast Adams Street, enjoy some free treats, see some festive decorated in the museum today, it looks beautiful, so come on down and, yeah, get your picture taken with Santa, everything is free.
All right, thanks for that. Forecast for future meetings, January 14th is obviously a big evening for us. We will hear the railroad subdivision, then we'll have the comp plan hearing, first of that, and then again, second on January 28th. That's our schedule for January.
That is correct. Yeah, nothing else that would be able to get on any of those January meetings. And just as a reminder, you do have the joint meeting with the, with the city council next Tuesday, currently.
At 8:37?
8:35, but we're going to work on getting that moved up at least a little bit.
That'd be great. I hope that happens.
Well, so if they had the Elk Rock Estates today, then I thought that that was what was the thing.
So Elk Rock Estates, basically, just next Tuesday is the, basically, the 120-day stop dead date for that. And so they had one, they had a special session today to continue discussing it so that they could make their final determination on the appeal by December 17th. They're not taking an action tonight because it's not a regular session, they'll be taking it at the regular session on December 17th. That should not take very long, they shouldn't. It's ongoing now, unless it's already ended. I was, you know, we were betting on who would get done first. But, but they're scheduled to go till 9:15, so we can still beat them. But.
Is that being recorded?
That is being recorded over at the Public Safety Building, so if you are interested in that, it should be available on YouTube shortly.
I had another question about, do we have a plan for how we're structuring the hearings for the comp plan policies? Like, you know, since we have it broken up across, you know, two different meetings, is there, is there kind of like a structure that?
Do one through five first and then?
Well, right, I mean, is there some way of planning on breaking that down, that we might advertise in advance, you know, or, I don't know, I mean, I'm just, I'm just thinking, you know, it would, this is, this is, this would be particularly challenging with a document, this substantive, to have someone come in and sit through the railroad avenue, the railroad subdivision hearing, and then not get the chance to comment on the policies that they wanted to comment on.
Right, and is, and is three minutes fair for somebody to try to come in and make comments on, you know?
Yeah, so.
Five or six policies or?
I don't know that we need to figure this out right now. I mean, it's, I mean, it may be up to the chair.
Yeah. I'm still going to be chairing on 14, on the 14th, right?
Oh, that's, your term officially ends on the 1st, right?
Yeah.
Oh, we need to have elections.
At some point, we need to make the transition to somebody else. Whether that happens on the 14th or not.
Okay, yeah, I think we hadn't thought of that. So we'll have to.
Okay.
Address that and to answer Commissioner Reg's questions, yeah, we'll need to discuss that internally. And we can, obviously, we don't have a meeting before the 14th, but we can discuss it and then share our thoughts and obviously not have a deliberation over email, but kind of give our preliminary thoughts and have you respond just to staff if you have concerns about that.
Does that work?
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, people that are showing up and sitting through a hearing for another hearing aren't short-changed and told that they just have to come back, you know, in two weeks.
Yeah, and so, I mean, similar for a legislative amendment, you need to make your findings and all of that, and the plan isn't to go through every single policy, I think it's to open it up for public comment and for commissioner comments on, do you agree with ultimately what our recommendations are based on, you know, the comments that we've received to date, and then you're going to be receiving public comments and needing to, it is, it's, it's a hard process for such a large document. It's, if, say, 15 people show up and have a bunch of disparate comments that touch on all sorts of things or conflict, or there's overlap, I think allowing all of that public testimony at the first meeting is going to be important, so then we have a couple of weeks to consider it and to bring it back, open back up the public hearing and discuss them and be like, here are our first thoughts about how to address all of these public comments.
Okay, so, yeah, that's exactly the kind of strategizing I'm just thinking, I'm thinking of. I just want us to be kind of prepared in advance to, you know, to really allow the time that we need to, you know, let everyone comment as much as possible at that first meeting, everyone that shows up, and then we can, you know, do most of our deliberations after we've had a chance to digest.
Yeah, essentially, there's just an applicant, the applicant being the city. I think we want to have a relatively concise presentation, we'll need to have a pretty robust staff report and findings, and then have the bulk of that first meeting be opportunities for the public to comment.
Okay, cool, thank you.
That's a good question, thanks for that. On that note, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
If we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.
You know?